Just for the audience's awareness, Mr. Tucker has withdrawn from the consideration process for the vacant board member seat. Mrs. Seeley and Mrs. Jimerson were unavailable this evening.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie, second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, voting Carrie. We'll move on to the pre-order business, which is the interview of our candidates.
So, good evening, everyone, and welcome. What we will first do is we will ask the board members to introduce themselves and indicate when their term expires, if they can. And then we will turn it over to each candidate for a brief introduction of themselves of approximately a minute. And then we'll jump right in with questions. I will be serving as the moderator for this evening's questions. So, board members, if we can start to my left with Mr. John.
Evening, all. Gary John, board member. I was originally elected in 2015. I am in my second term, just recently re-elected in 2020. And welcome.
It's okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Dale Coleman. I'm a lifelong resident of Salamaka State School District. I was first elected on board in 2016, the year after Carrie. And I just was re-elected to a full five-year term again.
Hello, my name is Chris Ray. I'm also a lifelong resident. I work for the Sanaqa Nation as the Assistant Controller. I was elected initially to the board in 2009. So, I'm the longest-serving board member right now. So, my term does expire in 2024. And I would like to continue serving on the board because, you know, I hope that the city school continues to grow and improve. So, welcome and good luck, everyone. Sorry, Sue.
I'm the oldest.
No, you're not.
Oh, you're a muppet. But welcome. I know most of you, maybe I haven't met you yet. I've been in Salamaka most of my life. I did live eight years in Cleveland, Ohio. And I did graduate from high school. Came back here the day after and been here ever since. I worked at the Salamaka Press for a long time and then ended up at Catararas County and was the election commissioner for 20 years. Retired. So, you got a wonderful opportunity to be on the board here. We do get along well. I think we're doing a lot for our school district and the children. And I think any of you would be an asset to our board. So, thank you for trying to be on the board. I appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Barb Sandy. I would also like to thank you for applying for the position on this board. I'm in the final year of my second full term. Although this is my 11th year on the Board of Education. As I said, my term left expire this year. I talked to the district for over 30 years. One of my three sons graduated from Salamaka. And one of them just came back for the alumni football. Not the alumni football, but the first opening football game. It's our coach, Witcher. And my boys will always have a good tie to Salamaka.
My name is Brad Early. I was elected in 2013, in 2024. Graduated with 2024. Two years of having that, so.
So, joining us this evening is District Clerk Janet Cook. And over behind is Levi Spoonieberger helping us with our technical support tonight. So, candidates, welcome. By random draw, we'll start with Mrs. Kraus and then Mr. Ryder and then Mr. Mary. So, if you'd like to make an opening statement, please turn on your microphone and go ahead when you're ready, Ms. Kraus.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to meet you all. I know these are extraordinary times to get together at this point is great. And glad to have the other candidates here with their interest in such short notice. So, that shows me that we have a very lively community for this whole Salamaka School District. So, I am a graduate of Salamaka. My son is currently in seventh grade here. We are in our third year with this district. And I've seen so much progress. And I would love the chance to be able to be a part of that with a team that has just, you just don't stop. And I serve the Sanaqa Nation as a regulator. So, a lot of my job centers on the black and the white and really trying to make sure that we're keeping public health, environmental health, and of course, economic considerations in mind. So, I would really love the chance to apply some of those skills that I use in my everyday. And I've gotten to know a lot of you through Title VI, but I don't feel like I've gotten to know you enough through that. And those two different things completely. And I would love the chance to apply a lot of my skills. I was a previous college professor. I taught communications, public speaking, business law. And so, I've had that part as being an educator. I know it's hard to translate college education to high school education, let alone secondary and elementary and pre-K. However, I have such a greater appreciation for teachers. I had a class of 26 students and it was testing. So, I just, I just would really love to learn my experience and to also learn from all of your experience on how you do what you do. Because just I've done just the tip of the iceberg and would have done with Title VI and all these other different community groups. But in the bigger picture of it, this is a big job and I understand and I appreciate that. So, I really just look forward to the opportunity.
Hi, I'm Ted Ryder. Of course, you know that, graduate of Salamaka in 1999. The years fly by and before you know it, you're at meetings like this on the other side of it all. I've been a lifelong resident, pretty much my whole life around here. And about two years ago, I had a son and started to look at ways to continue the tradition that I went through with the school and ways to hope steer where I would think would be positive stuff for him and the other children of our community. We're lucky enough to be in a small community, but at the same time, we're one of the most diverse in the area with all our different communities that we have within it. And just being able to look at this when the opportunity came, whether it was an opening like this where I've been slowly looking to think about getting involved with this and it seemed like the opportunity that would be beneficial to do this. And if it was lucky enough to become part of it, truly figure out if there was something for me before it was going to be a five-year term. This, I was very happy to see that there was, you know, originally six people that applied for this. That's great to be able to turn up for something like this. It's glad to see that, you know, we're down to three here. But at least there's some choices and some opportunities to be heard on different issues. And I look forward to the opportunity and challenge.
Evening, everybody. Well, you don't know me, Skip Derrick. I was actually elected to the Board of Education 2013. Term was up 2018 and six was due for some reason, lucky number for me because there were six people, six candidates that ran that year. Now there were six candidates again today. I've always said it, when I first got onto the board, I wanted to make Salamaka the way it was back when I graduated, when Dale and I graduated. And we've come that way, we've come that far and you guys have continued it. It's been phenomenal. And unfortunately, I'm just lousy at politics. I'm good at problem, I'm good at problem solving. And I think I showed that, but I'm lousy at politics and so it did get worse and tougher. But I still believe red and gray, always have. I still believe the student needs to come first and will always come first. And that's the philosophy I know the board has taken by and it's one that I still believe in today. I would love the opportunity to work with you all again. I think that everything's headed in the right direction and I think it's just phenomenal. I think you've had to overcome a lot of adversity through this last year and a half. And I think you've come across and come out with flying colors. I've seen more, more preparation here and be ready for it than a lot of colleges that my daughter went to and things like that. So, I think it's just a great group of people and I'd love the opportunity to work with you all again. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. So, we'll start with the first question for Mr. Ryder. How have you previously engaged with the school district?
Pretty much in the past, I've been, I mean, until now, really have not been very involved with it. Other than going to, you know, different events such as, you know, sports and other stuff like that. With my job, it kept me out of the area a lot, got back into this area. And now slowly getting involved and looking at this as being a step to start engaging more in the school itself. And being able to do that, having a young child really turns your life around in terms of what you want for his future and the children in the community and seeing them being more, and him starting to interact with kids his age, even though he's young and he has many years before he'll be quote unquote in school. Having that spark interest in starting to get wanting and starting to get more involved in the school. That way, I know more what's going on and being able to make kind of decisions for him and then the other children of the area.
Same question, Mr. Mary. How have you previously engaged with the school district?
Well, as I stated, I was on the school board for five years. I still attend football games. I still go to the baseball games. I was so excited when the diamond finally opened up that Lisa's one thing, I'm sure Teresa won't have to listen to me, if on the board about complaining about varsity games, being behind the high school, not at Tarsia Park and that part. But I've never really stopped being involved. I still try to hit to as many of the activities I can. I read all the minutes, I watch, I come across and look at the, what's on the agenda and everything else that comes. Not the same for me, the login on with the Zoom meeting. So, it was more fun to come to in person. But in that aspect, I never really stopped and want to continue to be, as I said, with the community, with the district and take this district as high as it can go, give it back to the promised land again.
Ms. Kraus, same question. How were you engaged with the school district previously?
Well, most currently, as I had mentioned already, Title VI. I've been involved with that group and currently serve as the vice chair. We're in the midst of a reorganization and just about two and a half years into it, maybe a little bit over now. But I've been learning a lot through that group. And also, my son's a student here. He has yet to really get into a lot of the clubs. However, he does really enjoy learning more about his cousins. And he's like talking to me about other students. You know, I went to school with their parents. And he's looking at me now. It's just, it's, it's mind boggling. And it's, you know, I brought him back into the hall the other day to school. I was like, man, I remember busting these fuckers. So, tried to get in here and getting frustrated, just like I am right now. And, you know, so it takes it full circle. So, not only, you know, through Title VI, full circle with my son, but even previous too, when I first came back to working with the nation. I was in the agriculture department and I really wanted to see the food system in here change and more, more different offerings, you know. And I got involved and I brought in some bites and chili. So, I started, you know, getting into the community a bit more. It was a big leap for me to come back in. Also, I felt, I felt good about that. And it's been, you know, steps in different directions. And so, I just feel forward to getting into more, any, any other activities that we can get into. So, whether that looks like helping out with ski club or what, what have you. So, so that's my current.
Thank you. Next question for Mr. Mary. The Board of Education has numerous committees, including the Finance, Personnel, Safety, Indigenous Education Committee, and Policy Committee. If selected, what committee would you like to serve on and why?
Probably more on the, the Policy Committee to keep things as current as possible, to keep them updated with the current climate and, and stuff. We have a lot of policies that are, as are ready, as you, they're in the minutes of the meeting. So, I think they're updated. Some of them I think are antiquated. And I think they need to be updated to, to reflect more of the concerns in the community, the country, on how the children, as they're, seem to be growing up faster these days, much more than, than we did when we were younger. And there's a lot more out there that doesn't work for them. And you have to balance between what you may feel or the way, the way you want to protect your children as opposed to what the government or anything that that entity says, that says affects your children. As parents, there's nothing more that we want more to protect our individual, our individual children. So, but as a board member, you have to take all children into account and look at balance of that. And sometimes I think it's, it's a real tight balance there. And I think it's a good discussion and I've always felt it, I have always been a good problem solver. So, I think that would probably be one of the committees that I would try to push.
Ms. Kraus, same question. Finance, Personnel, Safety, Indigenous Education, or Policy? Which committee would you like to serve on and why?
Intuitively, to give me a bunch of, and just based on my background, I would lean towards Indigenous Education. However, I would definitely not just limit if I was able to help in other areas. I'm willing to, in my professional capacity with the Sanaqa Nation. I already help, I've already helping right now currently with the Natural Resources Committee. I helped out, helped out before and when needed with the COVID-19 Task Force. And I serve multiple purposes and I take on any challenge that if I had the expertise that I can help them, I'll definitely help. So, I wouldn't definitely limit myself to, but intuitively with my backgrounds, I would lean there. But I definitely would limit it myself if I didn't have to.
Mr. Ryder, same question. Finance, Personnel, Safety, Indigenous Education, or Policy Committee? Which committee would you like to serve on and why?
I would say if there was a great need for any of them, I'd be open to any of them as well. But the one that would probably be looking into the policy right now, just for the sheer fact that it seems like that's been the biggest thing in my mind that I've been seeing through work in other areas of is that's the one that's always moving around right now. Especially with other COVID changes and personality issues that come with that, children, what has to be passed, what has to be passed. It just seems like that is an area where policies come in. It seems like it needs a lot of manning right now, just due to the fact that I'm trying to keep up with it. And at the same time, be able to communicate that to the, the community for the, the help of the children, help of the staff and the help of everyone. It's a time where a lot of school boards across the nation have had a lot of board members resigning or quitting because of some policies and other stuff like that and also community outreach or thoughts on that stuff. And it'd be good to have, just my, like, feel that I'm pretty strong in helping that committee be able to voice the policies and be able to determine the best needs for the, the kids, the community, and the school.
Thank you. Next question is for Ms. Kraus and for all candidates. Short answer question. Is it your intent to run for reelection in a, if you are appointed to this temporary term?
Sure answer, yes.
Mr. Ryder, same question. Will you seek to run for reelection if appointed to this temporary term?
I'd also be, yes.
Mr. Mary?
That is definitely, yes.
Okay. We're at the 30% mark in the question, so that's good. This one is a, perhaps a little more reflective for Mr. Ryder to start. From your perspective as a board candidate and community member, what is the district currently doing well and why?
I would say probably the, the community outreach in terms of, I mean, it's been around us and a lot of the feeling. Me having a young child, I haven't had to deal with the COVID issues over the last years of, you know, in school, not in school, partial school, that stuff. But I have a lot of friends that have children that are, and I know there's the families that I have friends with and stuff, really. And when I was a kid, we didn't have that, whereas the text messages and a lot of the update on the website, just a lot of the information where the responsiveness of being able to get the information out to the parents to make them a, know what was going on. And in a way, you know, you're always going to have frustration, but it seemed to the policies that have been enacted and the communication you had with the community on things, you know, with COVID and in school and out of school has been very well appreciated by a lot of the people that I know. And I think that's a very good, and maybe that's the one.
Mr. Mary, same question. From your perspective as a candidate and community member, what is the district currently doing well and why?
Unfortunately, I think that his answer is one of the best ones. The outreach that you had with the community has been, sorry, Carrie. Not to gobby what they said, but the outreach, I think, has been fantastic. The, the way that you're handling, they're getting information out there, getting information to homes, to getting information to the students and, and teachers and parents alike. To bring the community, I remember the board adopted, wanted to be transparent after the budget was shut down or the, excuse me, the improvement budget, the initial one was shut down. And the board decided to become more transparent and I believe that you have, I believe you've kept that. And the, with the city, with the students, with everybody, I think that that's been, I mean, what you've done during this year, during the COVID crisis to keep students, faculty, teachers, everybody safe, I think has been commendable. I think that you've done, made great decisions. I think you've had to make some tough decisions, but I think you've done very well in that aspect. And like I said, from what I could see in having a daughter in college at the time that it was going on, you were well, more well-prepared, prepared, prepared, excuse me, for this than a lot of colleges were. And I think that is a lot testament to the leadership that's shown between the board and the leadership of the district.
Ms. Kraus, same question. As a candidate and community member, what is the district currently doing well and why?
I also have to echo that too with the communications. It's quite huge, means a lot. And it's not just the social media. It's not just what you see in the local newspaper. It's not just what you find in any sort of venue. It's also that personal communication. Because when I get a phone call from multiple people already and we're, you know, just barely into the first part of the school year, that's huge to me. And I've never had that before. And, you know, it, it, there wasn't this, these COVID times, this was before. So, COVID also just brought that even more to the forefront. Another thing that I would say was really excellent was, and unfortunately, was the mediation issue. I mean, you didn't want to go halfway on that. And the communication has been upfront and just not even pulling any punches on the processes of cleaning and taking care of that. So, you know, everybody was right in, in the loop on that. And, you know, it goes back to, I think about when you just talked about your, you know, back in the day, you know, we would wait for school closures at the bottom of the television screen scrolling. We've come a long way from that. And, you know, it's, it's nice. And, you know, it wasn't even that long ago that, you know, we were trying to look outside, maybe looking on the internet, you know, it's just 5:00 in the morning, okay, winter closure, is it? But we've come a long way and COVID just, I think, took it up another notch on that. So, so kudos to the communications.
This question starts with Mr. Mary. What does, is the Board of Education or district need to improve upon and why?
We were there to start with somebody else first. I think there's still, that we need to improve a way to, and it's one of the most difficult challenges that there have been, I think, for years. And I think a lot of school districts have it, is the get to get parents involved, to work on a way to get the parents more involved with their, their students to, to get rid of some, a lot of the empathy that we've seen out there. And I think that's, unfortunately, I think it falls upon the district. And I think it falls upon the board to try to come up with ideas, to, to facilitate ideas, maybe from other outreach or, or other districts that may, that may have great participation from parents. And that, and we used to joke and, and And we used to joke and, and unfortunately it's, it's. True, but a lot of time you'll see the parents who have young ones coming up and young, and young ones who are in the, in the school district, you'll see the same parents. Over and over and over as they're continuing in the same groups and the same things and not bringing in, it's always the same people, the children change. And maybe forty, forty children in the, in the group or something that's doing it and ten parents and it's always the same ten parents. Uh, that are always doing it and it's, and to get the involvement, I think is. One of the hardest things that's out there for, obstacle for. Any district and for any board, but unfortunately I think it, it has to be followed on the, the board and, and the district to, to do that. And to bring the parents in to get them more involved.
Ms. Kraus, same question, uh, what does the school district need to improve upon and why?
So one of the things that I've been kind of thinking about. Yes, I've seen some great progress on the forefront, but I believe that we could take it one step further. The school district that we were at in Vermont, I'm surprised myself, I wasn't gonna do Vermont story, but. In their school system, they also included it because they were much smaller than Salomega District is. However, they still had the robust after-school activities and I think the one thing I would love to see is a different. You know, baby steps into a meal offering for the after-school crowd. And I think that would be huge because I know some students, like I remember when I was in seventh and eighth grade, I was one of those yahoos that was a double sports person. I did swim team and I did cross country. I didn't get home until after eight and I was whooped. How many of our students are in activities and sports or double sports and when do they have dinner? So that's one thing I would really like to see explored to what, what can we do if there's, you know, something that's taken grant that's healthy. Or, you know, it doesn't have to be a full sit-down meal, but, but, you know, something to that, to that progression is something I would see. Something to work towards.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ryder, same question, what does the district need to improve upon and why?
They have made, the one thing with me is like, when, when I grew up. Was in the outskirts of Killbuck, um, on the outside of, everybody thinks the school district, the majority of the students are from within city districts. The school district and other entities have made. Good progress, um, in this area, but there still needs to be a lot done, like where, um, my family. And other people live on McMonville Road on Killbuck. The, uh, there is very little cell phone service, we have not got internet service yet unless you. Spend high money on certain things that doesn't work so well. And I know the school district can't solve all those issues, but the times have been going faster and faster towards more electronics, more Zoom meetings, more stuff like that. I guess it would be just remembering in the, the back of your mind that a lot of. The stuff that is moving forward technology-wise sometimes isn't reaching a minority of. The individuals that are still within the districts because of limitations of that technology and then just not to. Forget that, that, that we would not, not everybody's within the actual city.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to with the board's permission, I, I think we've covered question seven. I just, okay, I just wanna keep us moving along here, so, uh, question eight will start with Mr. Ryder. Let me just make sure, yes, I'm sorry, um, we'll skip ahead and we'll do question eight on our agenda, so we'll start with Mr. Ryder. As a board member, will you avoid personal agendas that focus on, and focus on representing the entire community and not a. Single item and do what is best for the children of the district?
That's an actual question and yes, the answer would be yes, it's not. It's never, my intention of when getting on this board is never to fulfill, you know, general mind or anything like that, it was. My, you know, like I said, having, having a kid changes your perspective on being in that, but the, it's the community and the school themselves making the best decisions for that. There are always, our area has always been full of discussion and different opinions on things and I think that's. Good to have opinions on things, but never to put your own opinion above the whole of the community. The whole purpose that I've always thought about is this board is, there's a multitude of things you always do, but it's the whole, not the piece, I mean, the pieces come together. But you look at the whole and try to be the best you can be at that without pushing an agenda that is strictly for yourself. But for the community and children.
Thank you. Mr. Mary, same question, uh, if appointed to this, uh, temporary board seat, will you avoid personal agendas and focus on what is best for the community and children of the district?
That's a definite, I mean, I, I said, stated at the beginning that I feel that, uh, the district should and always do what's best for the student. Unfortunately, I mean, that could be unfortunate or fortunate, I, I think that, uh. My pastime on the board showed that if it was something that I felt was in a personal matter, I would have stayed from the vote. So that I wanted to make myself perfectly sure, can come across that I was for anything that would be, if I felt that it was. Anything that might benefit somebody or something in my family, I would abstain from it. I think that all the decisions need to be what's best for the student, always been that way and I will continue to be that way. The students is what's, the ones that have to count here and always will be that way.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kraus, same question, if appointed, uh, to this board seat, will you avoid personal agendas and focus on? What is best for the community and children of the district?
Yes, if appointed, I, I believe I, I would do my best, my due diligence and making sure that I do come from a large family. Ensure that when I had any sort of decision to weigh, that I would make sure that I wasn't. Showing any sort of impropriety in those decisions and immediately count myself out. And I also keep in mind too that I grew up in Steenberg when I was in Salomega School District and then I lived in Salomega. I've lived in Killbuck, so I've gotten to see different kinds, parts of the district. Now some cognizant too that we have students that come from other areas that aren't necessarily within our district, that actually. Could be going to a different school, but they choose Salomega, so I want to make sure that I keep all our community members in mind and. I would hope that they would feel that they could come to me if they had anything to say and just talk about, just even just say hi. It's, it just feels good, it feels good to be a part of the community and I want to at least. Give that notion and that feeling and I would like it in return, so, yes, I would conduct myself as, as bare possibility.
Excellent, so just in terms of process checks for our candidates, we have three questions left and a closing comment from each candidate. Okay, so just ask for the, uh, their thoughts on them?
Yeah, that's all the reason I want to know, because I think the people.
Okay. So, um, candidates, we'll start with Mr. Mary, um, there are a couple of, uh, current agenda items that are very, um. Controversial and important in the community that involve mask mandates and vaccine mandates in school. Do you have any thoughts on those issues as they pertain to Salomega schools?
I have a lot of personal thoughts on that, but as a member of the board. If I was a member of the board, I would have to take into effect and take into consideration all the students that are involved and in. And how it would affect them, um. I believe this virus is real, I don't care about the conspiracy theories, I don't care which side of the fence you're on, it's real. I know friends, I've, I've lost people, I've lost loved ones to this, to this virus. So if it's a way to keep it from spreading to our children and they feel that the mask is the best way for it. Then I have to agree that the mask is the best way for it, I've seen it both sides, I've seen it, I, I've been family members who have lost and I've been. Friends of mine who have had family members who have lost, so I do not believe that it's, uh, a virus that's gonna go away. And I don't think it was, it's a. Government conspiracy that started, uh, I will, I don't care in that aspect, I will say that it, that I, it's real. And in that aspect, I think we need to take every precaution to. Save and protect everybody we can, whether it's a staff member, whether it's a teacher, whether it's a bus driver, monitor or student. And whatever mandates that we need to put in at that time, I think is what we need to stay with and I think is that we need to take it as whole. And stand by it as a whole as a decision. May not be the popular one to take, but I think if it's a decision that we feel is, that, that everybody feels is a message for the students, I think it needs to be made and needs to be stood by.
Ms. Kraus.
This is definitely not an easy topic. I've always gonna lean to the experts, I don't claim to be the expert, so I'm gonna lean on what is the most current available, whether it is. Legislation, whether it is something that comes down from, whether it's New York State. There's reasoning behind it, I'm gonna listen to that reasoning. And it's not just one person's decision, so I will definitely take into consideration the experts' opinions, I don't claim to be the expert. But I'll trust the decisions of those that I would be working with, if I would be working with the board, that would be you. I've been in those different conversations, it's not easy. But I'll try to navigate the best I can, keeping all the best policies and most current information at hand.
Mr. Ryder.
Yeah, it could be a question like that.
Sure, uh, there are a number of important issues that have some controversy to them, including mask mandates and vaccine mandates in our district. Do you have any thoughts on those issues?
I do, like Jessica, I mean, not expert in this thing, but there are a lot of experts out there, one thing. That I've noticed for just the community, for the school district, um, for the kids, even for the company I work for is. To try and keep, follow the best guidelines and try to keep consistency to what looks to be, you know. People are saying is the best approach to try to keep. COVID and all this stuff in check, uh, the problem is, is if you keep changing stuff back and forth, it's always, it's always a developing thing, we're learning more about this as time goes by. Some things have. Thought to be true have changed, other things that they didn't think could happen have happened, but the masking overall has seemed to be a very. Stringent thing that keeps getting called, that's becoming one of the best ways to keep this in, um, besides that seed issue. And keeping consistency to that, um, and what the community, you know, always understand what the community wants, but as a whole. Whatever we can keep the students, the staff and the community as safe as possible would be the decisions that I would think would be best for me if I was on the board. To try to do with other members and the community.
Thank you. Board members, just a little guidance on the last question, yay or nay?
I would just ask all the government vaccines, I'll tell you, there's a lot of.
Sure, uh, candidates, the question is, um, as a board member, would you support vaccine mandates for staff? Let's start with. And or children, uh, certainly an issue that is going to be coming into the forefront, uh, soon, so we'll start with Ms. Kraus.
I'll start off with, first of all, I'm not here to push my own personal thoughts, I'm still gonna try to address this as a collective. And do appreciate that that is an issue that would be brought to the forefront, it's not going to go anywhere. So. That's, that's a tough one, honestly, to be, you know, there's a whole lot of information that you'd have to consider on that. You know, what's available, age groups, where are we at with it? And unless I have the information and everything that I need to make that sort of a heavy decision. I'm not even at that point right now to give you my personal, I can give you my personal. If you want an actual decision, I need the actual information and data in front of me, I'm not gonna give a hypothetical answer. When it comes and I have to answer and I got the data, I'll get it.
Mr. Ryder.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Jessica, the, uh, my personal feelings towards that, but at the same time, it's not a personal thing, the. A lot of it is, is everything seems to be coming with this over periods of time, it's always changing and, and the one thing that. Everybody's trying to do is to come out with a quick decision, then over the following months, the science or the data neither supports you. Or contradicts you or turn it into a different position. My personal feeling is, and I mean, we have federal guidelines now that it may not even be our choice whether it is or not, it may just be. Totally honest that that's something that has to be done, um, but my opinion would be to. When the time comes, see what that data is, see what these vaccines, if more and more have been, you know, fully certified. That is a big thing, I was a science guy, the more time we give with some of this stuff. To do is, in my opinion, is the best to see what those results are before we jump down, or roll that equation or answer.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mary, same question.
Do you have to forgive me, I've been one of the first people to hate masks because I can't understand people. I've had a hard enough time hearing people to begin with, but when the mask is muffled, so I didn't understand everything that you said, Mr. Really, but I thought you did ask for a personal opinion on, on the thing. Again. Is the, uh, everybody spoke, I do, would want to see all the, uh, guidelines and all the experts because. I definitely know that I'm, I'm not an expert on it, um, but. It was taken out of our hands and it's a federal mandated thing, then I don't think you have much of a choice, but to do that, we have to stick with it. It is a difficult decision, um, if you're looking for how I feel personally about it, I'm not opposed to the vaccinations. Personally. But it also has to depend what's best for the community and what's best for the thing, so in that aspect. I'm willing to discuss, I'm willing to do, it's not my decision to make and it's not as a board, it's not an individual decision to make, it's as a board, which is best for the. Which is best for the district and for the students, so in that aspect, you unify, you come together and you make your decision. But once a decision is made, then I feel that everybody who's part of that entity. Needs to. Back up that decision, if it's made as a whole, I think it needs to be, um, backed up and supported as a whole. And not as individuals at that point.
Thank you, uh, and then board members just guidance on question eleven, if that.
This is just another topic that's coming up, again, this is more of your.
Okay, so, uh, candidate, sorry, candidates, the question is, um, that, that critical race theory is a topic. That is currently, um, a, a topic of great discussion across the country. As a district, Salomega Schools, uh, is very inclusive and welcoming to all individuals. The question is, do you support the implementation of critical race theory in our district, why or why not? Oh, sorry, Mr. Ryder.
That, that is, that's pretty much there, I haven't, some things have, uh, bigger issues to others than that. I have, uh, some things, if it, if I really don't have an opinion on it, haven't been, there's been so much news and so much stuff going on lately and that is, that is one I don't know enough on that I can tell anyone.
Fair enough, um, and, uh, Mr. Mary.
Unfortunately, I would say, well, I. Unfortunately, I would say, well, I really, unfortunately, it's easier when the elder was. Unfortunately, I haven't, I haven't said, well, I absolutely don't know what you were asking about, so I cannot give you an opinion on it one way or the other. I haven't listened to too much of the other, and everything else, and that's not one that I did. I was, I really have no information on it. So I apologize, but I have no information to give you any kind of educated answer.
Fair enough. Ms. Kraus, same question.
If we had to go in that direction, I would say that we could use our different organizations, clubs, build new bridges to start developing that conversation because maybe a lot of others may not understand it as well. I'm not an expert in myself, and I would say it would be a great opportunity to bring the conversation forward in other venues and bring everybody on the same page and then see, see where it transpires and how that lands into the lap of the board such as this.
Board members, that concludes all of our scheduled questions. I defer to the board for any other questions that was intended to be asked. If none, then we can transition to closing comments, but I'll turn it over to the poll board for some guidance. Does anyone have any questions that they wanna ask that were not asked? Okay, so we'll conclude with closing comments. We'll start with Mr. Mary.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. It was a different. I learned a lot from it. I think you got three very qualified candidates, so I don't envy the position that you're in of choosing. And I think we will, and be a valuable member to the, to the board, and I think you're lucky. The days of just having one person maybe fill out an application, you're now getting two, three, four people. So even though it's a typically thankless job in the community, people are seeing that it's a viable job in the community. And I think that's a testament to the district and what the district has accomplished and where the district is going. So I think in that aspect, it's, you guys are to be as commended as anybody. I would love the opportunity to serve with you again. But at the same time, I'm not disappointed with anybody who, because I think the board is doing a very fine job. I think they, all the way down from the district to the, to the district, the leaders and everything, I think that it is. And I'm excited to see what the future holds. I would love to be a part of it. But regardless, I'm still excited to see what goes forward and watch Salome go forward and watch what happens from here. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Kraus.
Did you just call me Mrs. Kraus again?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's so hard not to call you all by your first names.
Thank you again for allowing the opportunity. And, you know, I'm so glad that, you know, there's so much interest in, in our community. It's, it's, it's so good to see. And I just, I just wish I knew. Thank you. And I look forward to, to see the progress that's made. We're setting roots here in Salome, so it's exciting to see where we've come from, the sender track at Metz Park to where we are now.
Thank you. Mr. Ryder.
Same as them. I thank you guys all for having this meeting and the opportunity to come down here, do this. The, I think, it's the same thing that was, people say in the past. Found stuff. We always wonder, community involvement, what you get, whether you get nobody or you get 10 people. I mean, I was very happy to see the initial turnout you had for this. Happy to be involved in that. I think we, I mean, we had three great choices here that I think you could add to this, which is, you know, making guys' decisions harder than these years always is a good thing. I just, I appreciate the time and now I look forward to the possibility to help move that just move forward in the positive direction.
Thank you to our candidates. Thank you to our board members for our questions. That concludes this portion of the board meeting. And I can turn it back over to Mrs. Redd.
Again, thank you, candidates. It's nice to see that people are, are interested in being on the board. I know everybody that's sitting with here is very committed to making the district grow and to keep improving in areas. We certainly don't think the board is the best and everything, and we all are very great candidates. Lots of experience in different areas, and so we would be lucky to have any one of you on the board. So with that, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn to the session so that we can review on the Board of Education candidates and who are gonna come back out and attend to the debate tonight.
Motion.
Second by all, second by Carrie. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Abstain. Motion.
And we'll stay right here for discussions and we'll.
Okay.
Candidates.
All right.
That's why I would say thank you all.
Would you, you wanna go for priorities, problems, everything else? Once in a lifetime opportunity.
It's hard to discuss anything. We're really.
Yeah, why don't we go to lever? Okay.
All right. For me, it's hard.
Anybody need to ask for break?
Me.
Sue.
When I've seen it, this was like.
Sue, you're.
I was just.
I see this.
Question.
Second.
Second by Carrie. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Abstain. Motion Carrie. I mean, we also need a denum that we need, by the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves, Addendum Number One, September 14, 2021 Agenda. The motion who's added them. Motion by Dale, second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Abstain. Motion Carrie. So what we'd like to do right now is each of the board members are gonna go through and say who they recommend to fill the vacancy of Meg, Dr. Megan McCoon. And I would just like to say first, thank you all for coming tonight and applying. I hope, regardless of the outcome, that you all run for a board seat at your next available chance because you've all shown that you are interested in what we do in the school district, and that's, that's what we want. And so we will, we will start. I am recommending Jessica Kraus to fill the vacancy. Carrie?
Wanted to say thank you to you all. I know this wasn't easy, and honestly, it's a very, in my mind, a very tough decision to make. Three excellent individuals in front of us. My recommendation is Jessica Kraus.
Dale?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for, for coming in tonight, too. It was a very difficult decision. You had very, very great things to say about, about the board. Selection process and, and the district in general. Skip, I, I wrote with you, you know. Jessica, we've, we've served on the title six for, for a couple of years now, so I really appreciate all of your insights there. Ken, you played soccer with my son back in the day. So, you know, it was nice to see you here again. My recommendation is for Jessica.
Okay. Thank you for coming. I can assure you, Skip, when he knows that this is much harder than actually. So I think we're gonna have a large amount of people running next May.
Sue?
I also agree with everyone. We've got some, three great candidates here, and it's, Skip has been here before, so he, he knows what goes on. And I would like to recommend Jessica Kraus. She, I've seen her at every meeting I think we've had since I've been on the board here representing Section Six, I believe. And so welcome to the, to the board.
Fire?
I also thank everybody for coming in today to interview this evening. I thank everyone for coming in to interview this evening, and I also recommend Jessica Kraus.
Again, thank you, candidates. We appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedules to come tonight. Right now, I would ask that the board appoint Jessica Kraus to the position of Board of Education member effective September 14, 2021 through May 17, 2022, and we need a, a motion and a second. So move. Motion by Sue. Second by Brad. All in favor?
Aye. Quick question or clarification?
Technically, doesn't this go until June 30?
No, because of the board election.
The board. Goes right to the board election.
The new seat doesn't take effect till July 1st.
There's a vacant seat. There is a regular seat, the one that Mrs. Sandy holds, that that election, that term takes effect July 1, 2022, and this seat will take effect the night of the election because it's temporary.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
And we have a motion by Sue, second by Brad. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain. Motion Carrie. Congratulations, Jessica. So now we can do the communication of the.
Yes, please. You give me two seconds to fill it out, please.
It's nice when it's a hard decision.
Jessica. So I have this now, right? J E S S I C A, right? And it's C R O U S E, yes.
I hope all.
Remember, we're still live.
I would never suggest that. I was just thinking, I was reading that sign right there. One of the things that says up there is we love what we do.
And we're gonna be reading from I to W, okay?
You're taking your own box. Okay, you can it from I to W.
I, Jessica Kraus, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education member from September 14, 2021 through May 14, 17, 2022, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Sign here. Thank you, Janet. Thank you.
Board. All in board.
Thank you.
Now, we need a motion to adjourn. The, motion by Sue, and by Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. And motion Carrie. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight and watching Facebook Live or.
Thank you. I'd like your new picture of the new board.